Take notes?
I can take notes, yeah. I'll take notes. Okay, so in front of you.
Wait, do we need to call the meeting to order? Because I don't know how to share.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna call this meeting of the, what is it, Budget and Finance Subcommittee to order. Okay. And we need to go to the joint as well, right Julie?
Uh, yep.
Okay. All right, so I think we can start.
Okay.
So the first item on the agenda was the, um, or the main, only item on the agenda really is to discuss the budget.
Yep.
So that's what we'll be doing today.
Okay. So what I put in front of you are, um, what I'm planning to present at the school committee meeting next week, pending any changes we make today. Okay. This is a rough draft. So the first page is, I'll briefly go over all the pages. First page is all your totals. So there's four boxes. The top box is a comparison of your budgets going back to fiscal year 21. And then for fiscal year 24, I have it broken out in two ways. One with including above level service items, which includes the items that were presented in the district improvement plan and additional items that are being requested beyond that. And then if we took all of that out and just did level service budget only, your items that you just need, your salary increases, utility increases, anything that just you need to survive as a district.
Yeah.
Is that my item. So to give you an example, your fiscal year, and this is all schools combined. So from taking fiscal year 21 to 22, you had a 4% increase. 22 to 23, you had a 7% increase. If you take all your above level service, you would be at a 23% increase.
So that's the big asks that we're, that we discussed from the district improvement plan.
Yep.
So that's a huge increase.
Huge. And then your level only is 13%.
Okay.
And then below, I have it broken out by school.
Okay. Yes, I mean across.
Can I ask a question? Is there a way, I'm just thinking, putting this on the town floor, right? Say, school committee approves, goes to town floor, to get townspeople to understand such a big increase? Is there a way to tie enrollment numbers to this? Not on your end, maybe, but maybe Carol's in. So that if people say, oh my gosh, that's so much more.
That, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yep.
That's funny, because I sent Christie an email yesterday because, and asked if their, if enrollment history has ever been provided in the past. And if so, I asked for that, because I thought, I was on the same lines. I thought that would be good to tie in, to validate.
Nice.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think we did, I remember last year, we, we always talk about enrollment in meetings, and I feel like last year Jeff gave a presentation about growth. This was before you were here. It was like last fall, maybe. He talked about growth and the building in both towns and just, you know, how every year we have an increase. So it definitely exists in this community.
Mine.
But it would be good to show that visual.
Usually it's presented in the February budget, in your final budget.
Yes.
I'm guess, but I don't, I didn't see it in there, so, but yeah.
He did a whole separate presentation last year, I remember, because he talked about that.
It was too, it was too much. Earth rate and all that, I'm thinking, I mean, simple, very simple.
Yes, what he did last year was in, very in-depth, because remember he had that study he was talking about? And it was like a whole meeting, yes, it was a very, yes. So he definitely has the data.
And I, we've been there recently, enrollment obviously is happening to the elementary schools, not so much the high school, because in Tohonto, we lose them around ninth grade. So it fluctuates up in that level.
Yeah.
But it's definitely increasing up in the elementary level.
Yep.
I think we can get that.
That's great.
I also like to look at it, like, once you get to the eighth to ninth grade section too, to kind of see what you are losing. And kind of brainstorm how to stop that and what you can do, you know? To kind of validate, a lot of these new stuff for the high school could help with that.
Yep.
You know, so, yeah, I think that's a great point to throw that in there. So then, you'll see three separate sheets, and now I individualize it by school. With the big ticket items for what the increases are. So if you guys want to start with Berlin?
Yep.
On the top, it'll say Berlin Middle School, that way, depending on our preliminary budget. So the first is the same thing that was on the total page, just for Berlin only. So level service only, you're at 12%. With the above level service, it's 20%. The one thing that I really wanted to point out, and I thought it was important to break out, was your special education increase, because I feel like it's quite high. So the first thing, if you look at level service only, your total increase is 12%, which is a change. And so your general budget is 8%. Your special education budget is 17%. So that, that's a big part of that, and a lot of that you can't, there's nothing you can do about it. We have two new out-of-districts students that are going into Berlin. Our private schools are increasing by 14%. So that's an increase of 102,000 right there. We need a new bus monitor for a special education student, that's 10,000. We, um, per, we're doing the special education reserve fund, adding in the 15,000. And then increase the special education transportation. That's an increase of 46,000 from fiscal year 23.
And it was high last year. I remember, because I was like, what is that $800,000 in bobs? Like, we can't do anything about it.
Yep.
So I mean.
I don't think it's 800 for Berlin, but.
No, it wasn't for Berlin, it was in total last year. I just remember being like, what is that number?
And I believe all three schools are going up. Yeah. It's expensive, it's very, very expensive.
How much did you save for the transportation alone?
For special education, transportation alone, it went up 46,000.
And it was 10K just for that, that one increase? Or it went up the whole 46K?
46K, total.
10K was the bus monitor?
10K is the bus monitor. And then we have one retirement. The person's retiring this year, it was a contractual agreement that was carried over in Berlin. So that's a payout of 15,000 for one retirement. And then above that is your general education increases. Electricity, that's huge. You know, I spoke to the utility company.
Yeah. Yep.
31% increase electricity right there. Our health benefits, health insurance, it's coming in at a 10% increase. That's 200,000 right there. Regular transportation, that's obviously gonna increase. New copiers, all of our building have very old copiers. It's not fair to these teachers, we've gotta get them new copiers. So I have a new copier going into Berlin. And then on top of the new copier, you can't get the same maintenance plans that we currently have, because these maintenance plans that we have are 10 years old.
Updated, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's additional funds on top of the copiers. And then it's more for color copies. It seems like nothing, but that's 15,000 just for copies itself. And then 15,000 for a new copier.
Wow.
And a math tutor that is put into the budget for fiscal year 24. That wasn't there for 23, that's an additional 20,000. Just all adds up so quick.
I know. Yeah, because they're big dollars.
Yeah. So this is all items that, there's nothing you can really do about.
That we have to do on.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have a choice.
Yep.
Now it's like, that was already increasing, and then we're asking for even more, so this is.
Right.
And let me, these special educations are required.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so that's, yeah.
Out of state.
There's nothing we can do.
There's nothing you can do.
Right.
Yep, yep.
So that's gonna be important for people to understand.
Yes, and then this 14% increase for these private out-of-district schools that they're projecting, I mean, it's really astronomical. It's so much, more than we've ever seen, I have ever seen in my career. I mean, I've never seen.
We don't, we don't know.
Yeah, that's the thing, the communication.
There's a lot of controversy about it. I'm gonna get the, I'm gonna pull that mandate, so we have it on hand, we can look at, you know, if it's available, if we need to, that'll help, I think, explain, it's not us, it's, it's.
Yeah, so a lot of schools are, are, you know, they're, even their school committees are writing letters to the state, really, because it's state mandated, it's through, uh, of the, oh, I can't remember what it is, but I can get it for you. But a lot of school committees are doing that, trying to say, you know, where did this come from?
Yeah, why justify the increase?
Yeah, yeah.
It's crazy.
So the next, I go over the above level service items that were part of the district improvement plan.
Yeah.
So we kind of went over these at the last meeting. So this part should, you know, really go pretty quickly. Total, total, it's a 20% increase. Special ed is 24% of that increase. General budget is 19% of that increase. So for special ed, a BCBA, .25 BCA, BCBA, .25 occupational therapist, and then a new special education teacher. And then you got requesting a new paraprofessional, a .40 health teacher, a .25 floating nurse, and a .25 technology technician. And then under teaching and learning, so I broke it out according to the district improvement plan. You have the portrait of graduate, typing.com, read alouds. If I'm going too fast, let me know, I'm kind of skipping over this because you already know it.
Yeah, we looked at this, yeah, no, we kind of went through this, yeah, no, it makes sense.
Yeah. And then technology is your power school upgrades. Now, the next page you might not know as much is above level service increases that are not part of the improvement plan. So there's various softwares that are being requested. Harper's time in attendance, that's internal for tracking attendance. Kind of switching over to a software that's compatible with our payroll software, dyslexia screener. We'll need new desks and chairs for students. We would like to start putting in 2,000 a year for that, kind of, to keep everything fresh and new and, there's a storage container that's there that we've been renting. And if we purchased it from the time we started renting it, we would own it.
Oh, man.
So I'm like, it kind of, it's 2,500, right around there, it kind of makes sense to just purchase it at this point in time.
They won't let us use the old, although they don't apply the old.
No. That would be great, wouldn't it?
Like instruments?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's like a lot of things. It's like, if you go to the equatarium today, you can apply your fee towards the membership.
Right.
Yeah, they do that.
That would be great, yeah.
All right, so you gotta buy it outright after paying rent on this for so many years.
Yeah.
That's.
Yep. We have a custodian that does the night shift in Berlin. It's currently outsourced. We would like to kind of bring that in-house, you just have more control. Financially, it would be the same, except if health insurance was taken. That would be the increase to the position. We have to reprogram the pellet boiler. Which Dan can probably fill you more in on that if you want, because that's.
Well, the pellet boiler right now, it just goes on standby every once in a while.
Oh, yeah.
Every day, myself or the custodian, we have to go in and manually get it going, get it running. So it's outdated, it's supposed to come in to, like, do a whole service on it, on the program and everything.
That's, that's not part of the grant? That, because, uh.
Didn't Steve tell us something about that when we did our tour at Berlin, like, last year? Remember, we spent a lot of time in that boiler room?
Yeah, I think it was, it wasn't functioning.
Well, remember that, they lost heat a couple times last year in Berlin. And he had to reset it.
Did you lose heat?
Well, now, I mean, right now I can do it from my laptop, at home.
Oh, that's good, I don't think it had heat.
You have to physically be, like, you have to physically be there to, to put the manual feed on.
Right, so if the heat goes out, somebody has to be there.
Yes.
Yes, and that happened like three or four times last year.
I, I do get notified, I get the emails, I get the error, pellet lockout, or pellet feed not, not functioning. But, I mean, the good thing is that we do have the oil backup.
Yeah.
As long as we have oil in it, we're okay.
Yeah, I remember, remember he was telling us last year, there was a couple days about really cold. Yeah, so this is clearly a necessary.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then we put various items from the facility assessment into here, about $18,000 worth. We had that assessment done, it was before I started. But we had a lot going into the capital, so we put some into the general budget.
Yeah.
We'll see how that goes. And then, or in feeling ham training for special education. So that covers Berlin.
Nice job, I love that. So clean to read.
I know, this is great. Oh, good.
Yeah.
Boylston. So Boylston.
It's a hot ticket item.
Yeah. For above level service, you're asking for 30%. For service level only is at 16%. So quickly, for level service only, of that percent, 41% of that is special education.
That's huge. Does this have to do with having the Bridges program in that school? Because I know Ace and.
I don't think so.
No, it's more not the out-of-district.
It's the out-of-district. Do people come to EES because of the Bridges program? Is that why we're getting out-of-districts? Oh, we're sending them.
Out-of-district, right. They're just families, more families, more vendors, more probability that they're going to do services.
Can you explain out-of-district, like?
Yeah, I, so, how it works?
Yeah.
Yeah, so out-of-districts are stu-, you know, students that are part of special education are on IEP.
Yeah.
And if we can't, and Carol, correct me if I'm not saying it correctly, if we can't effectively meet their needs, we look at out-of-district schools to send them to, with the, with the families. I think it's a group.
It's part of that team meeting, but what you're talking about, the Bridges, Bridges is actually keeping us from sending those somewhere, because we have a program for children.
Okay.
But we probably cannot meet the needs of all children.
Right.
So that's, those are the ones that go out. It, it comes with really careful consideration and a length of time, and a lot of looking at other options and from the team, the parents, it's, so, it's not just made haphazardly, you know, but sometimes you just know that this is gonna happen, so.
Yeah, so that, yeah, okay. And then transportation, is that something that is?
To go to these schools, you gotta transport that.
Boarding, right? Sometimes they have to board there. So Ace was telling me about this, because he hate, I know when he was here, he hated to have to lose a student. He wanted to do everything he could to keep.
Yep.
Because that was his wheelhouse, because he, he was a special educator before he became principal. So we had talked about this a couple times, you know, talking about budget and stuff like that. So I know, at least, I'm sure Mrs. Ales is following the same pathway, but it's literally like a last resort if they have to go out of district.
It is the last.
But that's a part of how the Bridges program was born, because of advocacy from Ace to to.
Right, but my question is, do we have more, like, is this, is our district different than other districts? So this is how it is just everywhere?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Okay.
This is what kills every budget. It just does.
I wasn't sure if we were an anomaly or if this is normal, okay.
No, it's just.
Good school districts, folks do wanna move in, come here and.
I mean, the fact that we have the Bridges program, I, I, it probably saves us tons of money.
Yeah.
You know? The more that we can offer to help these students. I was having a conversation with Janelle, and I know we have a new special education teacher in the budget, oh, it was Berlin, in, right, Berlin?
Yeah.
Or is it? Okay, maybe it's Tohonto, okay, so we didn't get there yet. But that's actually, might help say, help us to not send a dis-, a, that, a, some, a student or students out of district. So financially, when you look at that salary, it's well worth it.
Yep.
If you're gonna save, because just to give you an example, these two new out-of-district students are 310,000. This additional need for home medical services, 62,000.
But why does the school, this is what I don't understand, why does the school district have to pay for somebody's home medical? I, I understand, why wouldn't disability through the state pay for it? I'm not saying that people should pay for it.
That's not how it works. So the, the home medical, yeah.
It's part of what we do for public education.
We do get some of the funds back through, maybe you guys heard of Circuit Breaker? It's a revenue we receive for special education. We do get a little bit back for services that we provide in-house and our out-of-districts. So that helps fund our out-of-district tuition. It certainly doesn't compensate for it all.
Right.
But it does help.
Right.
And the funding doesn't come in until the following year.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, two years following year, so always a year behind.
Oh, got it.
And that's why it's important you guys put into the district improvement plan to start this special education reserve fund. And that's for, in the middle of the year, if you get hit with a new move-in, or you get hit with a student that absolutely has to go out, that will save your budget. Because that can, that can destroy a budget. So it's really important to start putting those in.
That was a good idea, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We've decreased on our budget during midway through the year, because we have to figure out how we're gonna pull the money from different pockets to be able to pay for those out-of-districts.
Right.
So everything else gets to us.
Yeah, it can be really crippled in the school district, but there are needs that are, will benefit these students at the same time.
See, I'm thinking that if, if, just keep thinking about town floor and how it's, at least in Berlin, the population that go are older.
Yes, that's how it is in Boylston.
And when they went to school, there wasn't this.
Yep.
Right, so to them, they're gonna see dollar amounts, right? They're gonna see increases, and they're gonna say, this doesn't make any sense, because when I went, it was very different. But when they understand it costs 310,000 for two students, then the figures are there.
Right.
You can't, you know, you can't argue that.
Right.
They understand, but if we don't give them.
That's why I thought it was important to break out special ed for this budget.
Totally.
Because it looks like you're just asking for all these needs, and you're really, like, so many, just nothing you can do about it.
Exactly, right, yeah, but the more you give them, then.
They are good about that, and I can see all the faces in front of me, but you know, Julie, I think part of this is beating the pavement after this presentation, come, you know, come back from school year to go to these different groups and have these conversations, sit down in workshops and explain, this is what's going on here, this and so on.
That's true.
So the more educated we can get, get a larger population, the more they'll be informed when we get to town floor.
Right.
They, they've been very good, as long as they understand what it means, right? I mean, they're very practical group, but they support, as long as they have a clear picture.
This is so clear.
Oh, my gosh.
It's just a matter of getting to these folks, right?
That's a good idea, that's what we should do.
Like Carter, we can go to.
Council aging.
Council aging, yep, seniors.
Yeah, because you're right, that's who goes to the town.
At least in our town, I don't know about in your town.
It's pretty much the same, unless there's like a cause, like Ace was able to rally up support, I think a couple years ago. I remember going and voting for the schools, we're asking for something, and we went through my whole neighborhood, so we all went. And there was like 50 of us there, and whatever it was passed.
Yeah.
Even if you host, you know, there are host gatherings at, at homes, and say, you know, if people wanna know about this, and we can come, do presentations, that like. Any, any way we can reach out, so that, I'm kind of looking to all of you in the towns too, if you wanna, see if somebody wants to host a gathering, and explain that. But we'll figure out the, and we'll try to connect with those people.
Or maybe, like, even, I'm thinking at PTO meetings, because I feel like even there's a lot of parents that might not have to deal with special needs, and they don't understand, you know, a huge group of people that are just kind of in their own world, working their job, doing their thing, keeping their head down, kids go to school, you know, very fortunate people. They just don't see the other side. Can I ask a quick question? So what happens if this doesn't pass at town meeting? Where do we get the money from? Is there a force, do they, will they be forced?
You mean, level service only?
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta make cuts, other places. You gotta cut positions, you gotta look at services. You can't cut it out of districts, do you? You, you, we will have to be creative and use grants in different ways, because you, we have a 240 grant. We would have to maybe use that more towards tuitions, but then that would take away services in other areas.
We allocate those funds.
Right, right.
And they're not big, no, compared to some of the other districts that are larger than ours. We don't get our, our need than we are.
Dan won't be able to prepare things, I mean, you gotta make.
You'd cut people out, yeah.
Yeah.
So you'd cut physicians, you'd cut things that are.
We would have to, we would have a choice, and then it's decided who we cut and where to cut.
Teachers, probably, yeah, forget getting those extra teachers. Yes, class sizes will be huge, yeah, so it'll just be a, see, that's, this is what we need to stop. You have to explain, this is the bleak picture, it, it's gonna stink. People are, because I'm already hearing people say, taxes increase, really, how much? Even parents, you know, well, this is the option. Or, you know, it's a very bleak picture for our schools, because to your point, this, the special needs part might not affect everybody, but it will affect every parent. If the schools have to make cuts, you don't have someone patching the roof, we don't have someone, you know, an extra teacher, so the classes have 30 kids each, so.
And I think that's laying, laying all of that out, that picture of this, this is what we can do, this is what will happen.
Seeing how critical this, at this time, I feel like, you know, maybe, I think it's like inflation and COVID and just the entire state of the world right now, it's, and people are gonna be like, well, why now? You know, because I have heard, I've talked to a few people about it, and, you know, well, how are you gonna pay for that roof? You know, is this an emergency? Yes, it's an emergency, well, how are they gonna, a million dollars, how are they gonna pay for that? Well, taxes.
That's all.
Well, that's the thing, a lot of parents, you know, they bring their kids to school, they don't understand, like, my position, they'll keep the building. It costs a lot, you gotta keep these buildings.
Yes. And it's critical, because it's a safe, becomes a safety issue, so, yeah, I, I.
And if, you know, there's, I mean, I like small town too, but if our tax base is residential,
Well, that's the other thing.
You don't want industry in here, well, that costs the cost.
That is the mentality in Boylston. Yes, they do not want any industry, at least you guys have that shopping plaza.
No, no, that's not even, that's not ours.
No, you must get some revenue from that.
Yeah, we only get like, like BJ's, for example.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We don't get all of BJ's, we only get half of BJ's.
It's a corner, right, somebody told me, a portion of the mall, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Boylston is putting in, right near the school, and this is gonna be another thing we'll have to talk about, maybe at this meeting, I don't know. They're putting in another apartment complex, but it's gonna have shops, it'll have retail shops underneath, and there was a petition, people didn't want it.
Right, isn't it the Sewell Street?
You know where that, yes, right on Sewell and 140. And they're not putting a light from Sewell onto 140.
Really?
Yeah. It's gonna be like 100 and something apartments and retail shops, eight or nine retail shops or restaurant.
Like a rotary, is that what they're gonna do?
Near elementary school, on that road?
No, the state, yes.
Over, really?
So it's not even like 500 feet from the elementary school, so imagine after school, or there's an event, already the parking is down the road, but, but something like that is gonna create revenue for the town, so it's just a matter of.
Probably gonna have a lot more kids coming from it.
That's right.
Well, from the apartments, yep. When is that, when is that planned? Um, I can get that information for you, I'm not sure, I saw people were over there the day, the land is already starting to be cleared.
It's really important to include in our enrollment projections too, stuff like that.
Yes, that needs to be included, and the state did, I guess, a traffic study already, they've come out and done a traffic study. And the reason why I know a lot of this is because I live right there, so my neighbors had a petition going around, And the reason why I know a lot of this is 'cause I live right there, so my neighbors had a petition going around, 'cause the neighborhood does not want the development. Um, because they will not, the, the state has refused to put a traffic light right there. The most they will do, yeah, it's gonna be bad, the most they will do is to put an extra lane, so that if you wanna turn right, 'cause you can't take a left out of there. But for all those people, it will be impossible to take a left out of, on now with that traffic. So I think they said they were gonna add a turn lane, so I think that, that'll probably go in first before they start, but that, that looks like it's gonna be starting soon. It was last summer that petition went around. So, yeah, I, I'll get the exact numbers, 'cause you're right, that's gonna affect enrollment, 'cause it will be, and there, I think they're gonna be like luxury apartments too, so. Yeah, and then I'm excited to feel the old, a nice restaurant or something, but who knows, I don't know what the retail shops are gonna be, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what it will be, exactly.
Give me a Panera, um, yeah, so that'll be something else to think about with this, so on the one hand, gives us revenue, but on the other hand.
So I, we also have a new copier, this one we're leasing, so I broke out leasing and buying, I'm leasing the, um, very busy copiers, the ones that the teachers use, the ones that have very high volume, so we can keep up with them every three years. 'Cause right now they're breaking down all the time with the teachers, and the ones we're buying are the ones that, um, are used less frequently. And they'll last longer because the vol, the volume usage is less. So we're leasing a new copier, increased to regular transportation, inflation thirty-nine percent increase to electricity, thirty-one percent increase to natural gas, we have plumbing and building repairs in Boylston, that, we just, we need to increase that line. And we have faucets, sinks, toilets that need replacing, we will, um, and ten percent increase to health insurance.
Nancy, the electricity, don't they have a, is that part of like the lighting, is that, don't they have a town, like, or?
You mean through Boylston Light? Yeah, that is through them.
And that's.
If that was national grade, it would be even more.
Sixty-four, that's what it would be.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's Boylston Light, it's crazy, well, the gas is, the gas is, um, and star, ever-source, sorry.
Ever-source, yeah.
And it is, it's outrageous, it's outrageous, I can't believe my electric bill. It's like, oh my god, I'm like, what is this?
But, I mean, not to switch to this year's budget, but that's gonna, you know, what we have budgeted, it's gonna go way over with this year.
Right, so how are we gonna pay for that? This is stuff we have to keep in mind, Julie, to bring back to the committee, 'cause there's other expenses people brought up, we need, this is, 'cause we're now, we're gonna have the electrical expenses for this year as well.
Oh, there'll be more too, 'cause those increases.
It increases every, the gas, yeah, if we have a cold winter, forget about it.
Then the next page goes over, um, the increases, the district improvement plan, fifty-three percent of that is special education, twenty-two percent of that is just the general budget, and we'll go through each one because we already went through our, our last meeting, unless you guys have any questions. And then the last page is above level service items that were not in the district improvement plan. Which, um, which is again your storage container, various, um, software items, new desk and chairs for students, and the Orton Gillingham training for special education.
So can any of these things, this software, Carol, I'm wondering, we, I don't know about Berlin, but like DocuSign, I don't know how much this stuff costs. Like the BEF and the PTO, it uses grants, and can we get grants for some of this? I know it's like talking small peanuts here, 'cause it's like the grants are like between fifteen hundred and.
And yes, you can, like the Rocket Map, for example.
Yeah.
The difference is they have to pick it up both Berlin too, and they're not gonna do that, so we'd have to figure out what the source would be.
Oh, 'cause you guys don't have, does your PTO not fund grants?
No, they don't, but their PTO is in a very good situation right now because they run some really unprofitable fundraisers.
So they potentially could, if they, but that's not part of their charter, if that's not, I don't know how those nonprofits work, if they can just say, we're gonna fund this.
Yep, they can do that, yeah.
They could, they could, yeah, right, that's right, I was gonna say to you too, so for example, like the DocuSign is something we have at central office, and we've just got that. That's, that's more administrative, but the dyslexia screener is mandatory now, um, that's a state mandate, we have to have a dyslexia screener for K through two. We're, we're doing it now, we have the screener going, it's called Royburner, there are only certain sanctioned screeners that we can use, the Dibbles is another one. But we just, we need to purchase that again now, next year, I mean, an annually, so for.
So I'm gonna actually move that to the front page, because that's something level service only, really, we don't have a choice.
The, the option would be, I can try to put that into like, um, one of our grants, Title I or Title IV or.
Oh, yeah.
So also, just to let you guys know how I did the budget a little different than, um, the prior, Director of Finance has always done the budget. So I included in the budget every one of our needs, whether or not it goes into the grant. And then I put the grants into the budget, but I allocated these items out of it.
Got it.
So like Carol just said, I could put that into the grant, which is fine, but I already have something else in there. So it's not like it's gonna make these numbers go down, because I already have it.
You've already spent the money, it's just the fun, yeah, it's just the fun, I get it.
In the past, he, um, the prior Director of Finance would kinda just leave items out and then put them in the grant. But I feel that you should really have a true budget and with your true needs, so that's why I did it, I did it a little different.
Yeah, I like this better.
So that is Boylston, and then we have Tohoto. Tohoto level service only is thirteen percent, above level is at twenty-two percent. So level service only, special education makes up for thirty percent of that, general budget's eight percent of that. Quickly, under special education, we have two new added districts compared to last year, that's an additional five hundred and fifty-five thousand. Increase to special education transportation of three hundred and seventeen thousand. New, um, special education, uh, evaluations and consults, that's eighteen thousand. And increases to PT services, music therapy, you know, yeah, students moving up, students with new me, needs. That's like fifteen thousand. Then you have the same as before, plumbing and repairs, health, electricity, we have oil here, um, we're currently out to bid for oil, it hasn't come back yet, I increased it by nineteen thousand. Maybe we'll get lucky and we can save, uh, depending on how it goes. We're, we're in, um, with Asset Valley Collaborative, we go with a bunch of schools and do that together. Um, and going out for bid, and we kinda as a group decided to wait a little bit and hope that the rates will go down a little bit. And we actually were just talking this morning, we're noticing that gas prices are going down, and we're like, ooh, maybe we should, uh, get out of this soon, because usually two weeks later it hits the oil, so we might go there soon, yeah.
Yeah, I just noticed that too this morning.
Yeah. Then the same thing, everyone has the same format, these are the increases for your district improvement plan. Special ed is forty percent, general budget is seventeen percent, um, everything that we discussed at the last meeting. If you guys have any questions, let me know, this is the new special education teacher, who does Tohoto.
Uh, how much is the, are the three D printers?
Three D printers are fifty thousand for all three.
Do other schools have three D printers?
For sure.
Oh, they do, really? I'm so out of touch with.
And that speaks to the STEM, you know.
Yes, I know, it's like so common, I see them at PTO sites, and stuff like that will help you from losing your students.
They are so cool.
Oh, they are. I know, I didn't realize, yeah, it's just.
But they're not even, you know, they're not, um, a luxury, they're what these students are using, and the word is, yeah, they're.
Yeah, they probably use them in the real wor, like when you go to work, I'm sure, like certain companies, yeah.
That, even that, I, I, um, computer numerical control for the technology class, you remember, that's the one Travis Perret teaches that course, and he said, this is what they use in the real world. This is what teaching these stu, students how to use that, that tool. Will help them in business, they can get internships knowing how to do that, so we're trying to be mindful of what we can use for their future.
And then, above level service, that wasn't part of the improvement plan, um, requesting a laptop cart for the science department. You got your various software, the outdoor container, we would like to add five working days for our guidance counselors in the summer. It kinda helps them, uh, prepare for coming back. Dramacol supplies, we discussed that at the last meeting. Update, um, psychology textbooks and some equipment in that class. Pilot a program for grade seven social studies.
Oh, amen.
Yeah, some of the stuff is like the middle school, it's needed.
Yep.
So we don't lose kids, yeah.
And then new chairs and desks for the new special education teacher in the Orton Gillingham training.
Obviously done, I see.
Thank you, well, that's what I have put together, unless you guys would like to see more?
No, this is good, I'm a little nervous about what happens if.
We just have to educate people.
Yeah, I think the other piece is, the piece is, as a committee, to decide what's gonna be important for you, what, what do you wanna fight for? What do you, what, what's your bottom line, you know what I mean, what, how do you wanna go into this? Will help you, and we can look at this and say, okay, we'll make, we can make cuts, we, or we can shift things, keep in mind, it's a three-year plan, so maybe if we don't get everything in the first year, we'll start to shift it over, you know, as we need to, um, like Nancy said, this is everything, the way it was, we initially laid it out, you know? But there's those options, so, so think about that, but I think it's, as a committee deciding how you wanna proceed with this. And, and, you know, there's, there's no negotiation, this is what we're going forward with, or is there a negotiation here? Because when we go to finance and both, you know, this is not gonna be received, that's your job, that's their job.
No, it is not.
Of course, the left board, but the, part of this too may be looking at some other options, we, um, I've been getting, you know, I just got one this morning. About possibilities for technology and reaching out to a corporation that may be able to supply some partnership in technology. So I wanna take a look at that, that may be how we're able to pay for some of these things as well, if we can get that, that kind of support. So it's being creative, I mean, we'd have to be creative, and reach out to the community with all of the different companies represented here. Maybe there's somebody just waiting to give and just waiting to be asked.
Yes, FedEx, or, yeah, those new huge, in Boylston, they're getting those huge, um, is it a Rand Whitney, I don't even know what it is. It's a huge warehouse, these massive, my husband said he thought there was an Amazon warehouse. I was like, no, are you crazy? I don't know, I'm like, are you crazier, are you not? I never know with a husband. Did anyone else hear about the Amazon? I'm like.
No.
Only the one in Worcester, right on that one.
'Cause there's, if you, have you ever driven back by that FedEx?
No, and I want to, but I was in a hurry to go somewhere.
Do it, I, I, so I tried to actually go, because for BEF, we were looking for money, a, and to your point, there's gotta be, 'cause I, what I tell you, it's like a city back there, like, I, I couldn't even get over how massive these warehouse, how many thousands of employees must be there? Or like packages go through, so there's gotta be some money to be had from these larger companies. It's just about going through the correct avenues, um, and again, like, if we don't have somebody that's dedicated to do that, 'cause it's doing the research and finding the right contact, and there's a million steps you have to take. But I do think there is money to be had from some of these massive, these aren't like small little mom and pop shops, this is like FedEx and there's two or three huge warehouses back there, massive companies.
I spoke to one of the select board members about this a couple of Fridays ago and saying, can you help us with knowing who's out there? And relying on that individual who has his own company, you know, but he said he would work, he would help with that. And also, he said, you know, there was a time that, that they weren't being asked these companies by and large, when everybody's asking.
Yes.
He said, the schools are going there, he goes, I said, well, if we can't, if we don't ask, we're never gonna get our name in there. You know, we have to get into the arena and, and ask for these funds, but, but to you put, that's, that is actually a job.
It's a job, yes, and we found out, um, on the BEF, one of the girls is an attorney, and there is a list of companies. And it's a, it's a very long list, probably five hundred companies, just, you know, big companies all over the country, you just have to ask, there's no questions they give. That's all it is, it's just, oh, you gotta do it this way, you gotta send a letter here, you gotta put it on the website, it's just figuring out what to do for each. I mean, we raised, you know, ten thousand dollars just getting for the BEF, just asking, you know, going around and asking money here, there and everywhere. You know, or sponsors in the community, but I mean, imagine, this is just the BEF, imagine a school department, you know, times are tough, it's COVID, we're trying to rebuild our schools, everybody is, so some of these massive companies that actually have had banner growth, or they're doing well. Frito Lay is another one, it's a huge company right there, so I mean, like, Boylston does have a few huge companies.
Maybe when I come over, if, if that person would share that list, I mean, you and I can.
I have it, yeah, we can, yeah, we can take a look, yeah, I mean, like, some of the stuff, it's like, no questions asked, here's five hundred dollars. Again, like every little bit counts, um, you know, and you could do it every year.
Right, especially for things that are constants, like if we can get purchase items that we don't, it's not like every single year we're gonna have to blow up again and ask for that.
Well, I think once you have the, the avenue set up, it's a lot easier to just, you send a letter and you do, you know, um, so, yeah, I, I don't know a lot about fundraising, but I have a couple of friends that do it for a living, and it's unbelievable the amount of money you can raise. And when you get into tight spots, like where, where I feel like we're kinda in a tight spot. The other thing I wanted to bring up real quick is, I feel like people are gonna wanna know what their tax increase is gonna be. If we, so obviously the school committee has to vote, we have to understand this budget, we have to decide what we're gonna do, and then we bring it to town meeting. I think that one of the things the people in the town are gonna wanna know is like, what's the bottom line to me, like, what, what am I gonna have to pay? So if we could work with the town, um, assessor, obviously in both Berlin and Boylston, 'cause I don't know if the tax rates are different in the towns, I'd have to look into that. Um, but I'm wondering, and obviously we're not gonna say, oh, you're, you have to pay two hundred dollars more, and you have to pay five hundred dollars more, but just a percentage increase, you know, if that's something we could, and I don't wanna have it come from us, I'd like to get the town assessor or FinCom, and I know they're gonna probably be not on board, you know, not happy about doing this, but I think if we could at least run a, like, like a what-if scenario, so that then when this is presented to the town, they'll know what they're voting on, like, okay, I'm voting to pay another thousand dollars a year, I'm voting to pay another five hundred a year, or another two hundred a year. 'Cause that's a huge difference for some people, like some people physically don't have the extra thousand a year, and some people are like, oh, two hundred dollars to make the schools better, I can do it. So I don't know how to do that.
If we can inform them before that meeting, the better, right, the more.
Yes, I think the number.
The assessments will be in, right, to the schools by February.
February, March, yeah.
So we'll have that information.
Yes, and then we can go to the town assessors and say, okay, if this is what we're asking, the money, what would we, the override after? Anyway, is it a one-time or is it recurring? I mean, these are all questions I think taxpayers would have. You know, some of the stuff, yeah, taxes might have to increase recurring, to your point, there's huge increases, if, if the inflation keeps going up and the economy doesn't crash, then yes, some recurrent, currently, yes, the taxes might, but some of it is a one-time thing, like fixing the roof and, you know, some of these one-time, but hi, again, hiring teachers, that's recurring increase. So I think if we can get numbers to people, and I'm not talking like too much numbers, like, but you know, high level, like, on average, you know, year-over-year taxes go up to two percent, but this year it's gonna be five percent to get everything we want. So I don't know how to go about doing that, but.
It's one of the town end.
Yeah, but we have to work, I, don't, you know what I mean, like, they have to see these, and they have, they have to be willing to work, yeah. They have to be willing to work with us, though. It can't just be like, this isn't our task, you know.
Now, when will they get this, the towns?
Not until February.
Well, yeah, after we vote.
Not, I mean, they'll get like a draft, I believe Berlin gets a draft next week, but not.
Wasn't this on that schedule on Tuesday?
Yeah. But not officially, I mean, the first, the first one is next week for you guys.
I'm wondering if it makes sense, and I don't know if they wanna come to, do we invite to the budget meeting on the thirteenth, the representative from the FinCom from each town? Just to kinda give a heads up, because if they come in and they see, oh, the school committee is supporting this, like, this is, this is not like every other year where it's like three or one percent, you know what I mean?
No, if you look back, it was four, seven.
So nobody's blindsided, and again, I don't, I'm just throwing ideas out there, I have no idea what proper avenue, like, how do you even go, I'm supposed to talk to the towns? Like, I don't even know any of that, you know what I mean? 'Cause I'm a nobody to these people, 'cause I'd be happy to go up to Boyl, I don't even know.
I will go through Mike and say, this is what we're thinking, we saw the budget, you know, we went through everything, and, and this is what we're thinking, we would like to invite them to come in.
This is a very new.
They, they may come anyway, you know, they, they see this information too.
Some of them might, yeah.
Yeah, the agenda, they're gonna, they're curious, and some will probably show up, they have in the past. But it could be, you know, reaching out to them now ahead of time and saying, this is what we're thinking, this is how we're doing it. We're gonna reiterate, these are needs that we have, this is not just nice to have items to keep going. Again, the question is, what do you want for your children in this town? What kind of schools do you want to have? What, what do we wanna do together and create here, um, to make this a really excellent school system? All of those things on the above level could go off the table, right, or most of them anyway.
Yep.
Right.
And barring the, you know, okay, we can do that, we can function, um, but there's gonna be, there won't be any growth for the children. It will remain satisfied, some folks may be fine with that, you have to keep that in mind, you know, some folks, that's okay, that's okay.
Well, people that don't have kids in the school system, yeah.
Some, and then there are definitely, I mean, we saw that when we went to, um, ask about some of these reports, and we had
That was awesome, yes.
folks who obviously probably didn't have children in the school system, maybe they do, but they've advocated for us.
Yes.
Finding, getting, taking a pulse of the communities too, I, I'm trying to get a sense of that right now as we're meeting with these groups, like, Berlin I know by and large, but Boylston, I'm not sure, you have two different.
That group at that meeting was one tiny group. That was all there for that one reason and they were all of like mind, so I don't necessarily know that that is the whole
Yeah.
pulse on the town.
Yeah, I don't know, we don't know. And again, keeping in mind that that's who the finance committee and the and the select board also represent. We have our vested interests, but they have to protect all of those
Yes. Yes.
situations as well, so. I think that's the deciding point, what do we want for our schools, what do we want for our children in the future? And if you look at it as, you know, even for some folks who are older residents or don't have children in the schools. They also have to think about what they value.
Yes.
What tanks a lot of towns is other schools, your families don't wanna move in or can't afford to move in or whatever, and so that affects the budgets as well. So, a lot to think about.
So can we I just, this is, to me, of anything I've ever done with budgets, this is a very unique situation. And I feel like this is, and this is a great thing, but this is very driven by the school committee, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? So I I've never seen it done this way, and I think it's wonderful, I'm not saying it's not. So I think that you guys kinda gotta
We have to not, we have to, we can't just sit back and say, okay, here, we put this out here and now vote on it.
We, yeah, we gotta find out.
You know what I'm saying? Right, so I think you are this strong with it, you gotta
I just don't, you know what, my fear is Nancy, I'm always scared that I'm do, you know, like how in on committee meetings, like I'm still learning, like, oh, the chair has to go is the representative, like I don't wanna do anything wrong, like I don't wanna talk to someone in the town and be like, oh, no, 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 the chair has to, or some, so
You can, of course you can.
I know, and, oh yeah, and then like Mike is awesome, so I'm like, like I just wrote a note to myself, I'll reach out to him today.
I think you have wonderful ideas, I think what you just said is makes a lot of sense.
Yep, and see Phil invite, you know, just send an email to whoever it is from the town and I'll find out for Boylston.
Yeah.
I think the challenge of school committee meetings is it's not, there's no discussion, so for these boards, they want to discuss and they want to talk. So if they come, which is fine, so they can get the picture.
Yeah.
But they're gonna wanna ask things and they can't, so I think a more um informal uh meeting, maybe here or or maybe
But if if you posted this before and shared it.
Yeah.
Maybe they could, would share their questions at public comment before.
Maybe.
Maybe.
That's true too, yeah, the thing that I I always, I I didn't like, I know it has to be this way, but school committee meetings, there's no discussion unless you're on the board.
I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, which is, right, right, cause they have public comment at first.
in administration, so for the community. Yeah, and then that's it, then they, they're
And no one responds to public comment, that's the other thing, you have to listen, you can't say, I agree with you or I disagree with you, so your comment is just, you don't know if it's falling on deaf ears, you don't know if you're agreed or you're disagreeing.
Right. Right. But you can cover it later.
You can cover it later.
You can discuss it, yeah.
I think it would be, I I'm I'm thinking from Berlin's perspective, at least, like if I if I said, um, you know, with Mike. What if we met with one member of the select board and one member of finance and we just sat with them over coffee and had this conversation? Because there's no, you know, not in violation of any public meeting, cause it's no quarms or anything.
Yes.
And just went back and forth with them. Kinda got a feel for what you're going to face when you go to them, um, cause you'll go with Mike, cause you're
Yeah, oh yeah.
Probably, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
So we can say that, you know. I I think the more discussion there's had before the March, you guys go in, it's gonna, I think, the who
Yeah.
Right.
I love it.
Yes.
whole community.
Absolutely.
There's gotta be a lot of different types of communication next month, yeah.
So we'll, we'll do.
Yeah.
Right.
Alright, so Julie, that's a good idea, so do you want, I'm gonna talk to Laurie, cause she, and me and her can do the same thing with the Boylston press, we can
So I'll do that. That sounds great.
Yeah. See if one of the select board members and the FinCom, um So I think that's a great idea.
Another thing I was gonna mention to you is if down the road, there is any to cut some things, that that I think we also have to know that the school committee would trust that we can make those decisions, I mean, I think subcommittees are good that way because we can sit in subcommittee and say, you know, we know that we can actually move, push this position over to the following year.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not imperative to have it this year, within the three years, we definitely need this and we know why we do.
Yeah.
But but to just trust that we can, we can shift a few things within the three, the thing is always keeping in mind, we're not gonna just keep pushing it out to a oblivion.
Right.
But we're gonna make sure that we, that our goal is within this three years to get these things. What will it be, I think it's just a matter of trusting that we could know what that is, because it's not just, it's not Nancy and me sitting down, it's it's the whole team working it out.
Yeah.
Me and Wood, even from department chairs and, so a lot of people are involved in this budget and what the needs are.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Do you in the backyard have an idea if you had to cut or shift? Alright.
Yeah, we do, we've kinda gone through that exercise a bit already and what that would imply, but
So it's not just Yeah, I trust you guys, yeah.
We were trying to honor what was decided in the s- subcommittee meetings prior to this one and and the all in.
Yes, and we still have that attitude, yeah, I'm sure that was hard, right?
Yeah.
For you guys.
We golfed a few times.
Because, yeah, yeah.
Because we know how this, you know, walking through these so many times, we know the like what's been realistic in the past.
Yeah.
Right.
And 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 last year was was a push to get some of these positions in place, um even in the desperate need to bring folks like the the adjustment counselor in, for example.
Yeah.
Because of the mental health crisis, those are the kinds of things that I think the public understood, the boards understood, but even those things didn't come without um some convincing, I guess, yeah.
And I think also, you know, during COVID, we had great opportunities and got, we got the Esther Graham, we got the COVID Graham.
There was money.
But now, so we funded the adjustment counselor, we funded an additional nurse, we we were able to get all these services that we weren't ever able to have.
Yeah.
But now we wanna keep them.
Right.
Right?
Right. Now we wanna keep them.
Includes them, and and we're not the only district.
No, absolutely, I was gonna say that, many districts are asking this question now, what are we supposed to do?
You know, this is Alright. To keep all these kids these great needs that they needed and that, right, but the funds aren't there and the districts are, and this is
And they still need it, they still need it. Exactly.
This is part of it, it's not just, are we need our new roof, this is, we want the services that we were able to provide with the COVID funds, you know, so that that is part of this.
Yeah. Yeah, it's tricky.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It helped us and hurt, it hurt us at the same time, yeah.
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 But I mean, we need that, like this is the thing, I I mean, and again, this goes up to a state level, like, cause some of this COVID damage is almost like permanent, like kids lost a year plus of their lives, like, some of them learning how to read, like that's a huge thing.
And now next year, you know, you have the I don't know if you wanna say like this, the COVID baby's coming up, right?
Yes.
So your preschool numbers are going to increase, I guarantee you they're gonna increase.
Yes.
And they're gonna keep increasing for the next couple of years, and I think it has a lot to do with this, and we're not getting the funds anymore.
Absolutely. Yeah.
It makes a difference.
And those kids are probably gonna have greater need, I see my nephew who has barely left the house cause of COVID.
Right.
He was born during COVID, he's two now.
Right, right.
And you know, we took him to the botanical garden and he couldn't handle the cra- they don't know how to deal with crowds.
Right. And there's your social emotional needs that are needed.
You're gonna, you're not gonna be able to have two teachers in that classroom, you're gonna need
Right.
three or four, so yes, there's gonna be huge.
Huge, but this, there's a lot of things in play here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you wrote it up really good.
Yeah, this is great, this is amazing, so I do wanna share this, I I think we should share this.
Thank you.
It's the cleanest one I've ever seen.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. No, and I, I love your, I really appreciate your
It's one of the biggest trust me. Oh, good.
Like, you don't even know, yeah, this is awesome, thanks.
The other thing I think too is just it's been the most transparent we've ever seen. Like there's, when you send your, any of all of those pieces in, grants or not, that's huge, because we haven't seen that before and then it, so this is, this is so authentic.
Yeah, great, I agree.
Oh, good, yeah. Transparency is so important right now, especially, you know, it just is.
It is, well, cause you're being honest.
You need to.
You are.
At the end, yeah, it's good honesty.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Yeah.
Alright, so
If you think of anything, just email us.
Alright.
Nancy still wanted to break the
Absolutely.
Yep, but, yeah.
No, I think it's just gonna be
Clearing schedules for after, after the holidays.
Yeah. I know, I know, gonna hit the ground running, no, I I think that's all, um
Yeah, we'll just discuss.
That's gonna be the hard thing, I think the committee is all on board with this, I think it's gonna be figuring out how to sell it.
Yep.
Exactly. Um one other thing I want to say, just to touch base, it should be like a two second thing, do we have any update on that cell phone power, I've had a couple of people ask me about right, have you had people ask?
Years.
For safety, I mean, I've had people come to me.
There's someone right outside here?
No, it's a Honda, it's no service.
No, the Honda, don't remember, we talked about
Yeah.
So I can't remember how we left that, I think, was Adam gonna do something?
Adam was gonna reach out, right?
So alright, I will do that, so Adam.
From Aaron, I did check in with Berlin, there was no um
No, it's gotta be with Boylston, right?
No, but I know there was potentially something there with Berlin and Boylston, some, there was some disagreement about who would root for benefits of this, but Berlin had nothing to do with it.
Okay, so we need to ask, um
Or maybe, maybe at least now, there's none of that.
Who would, I'm gonna ask Paul.
Right, and he
I'll just ping Paul and say, hey, who should I reach out to in the town of Boylston? To see how we can get the ball rolling, cause I think he had said, we could, the easy, or the best way to get cell service at Tohono is to get a general power.
Yeah.
Not a specific carrier. And usually I think that brings revenue to the town.
Yeah.
And since it would be in Boylston.
Yeah.
Even though it's for, it it would help the school, but it's still in the town of Boylston, it would be a Boylston thing. So, we just have to figure
See, I don't know, I think it'd be a school thing, that's what I would think.
Well, cause if it's not on school land though, it's whoever owns the land.
But isn't, doesn't, not, don't the towns own, they lease it, right?
It's not, Julie, I think, I think Paul was saying it wouldn't be on the school property, it would be on um the Boylston conservation, the town conservation, you know how they have the the trails back there?
Yep.
I think the Ta- Boylston owns that land thing.
Does it, or DCR?
The ZCR owns that land.
Oh, so that would be a whole different
Yeah, same with state owned.
Yes, so that would be a whole
State would bring more benefits.
Yes, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't they just put it on the um
On the roof. That's mini towers you can put on the roof.
You can put them on the roof, you can, I don't know.
And where does that cost come, the cost of that, who pays for that?
Well, no, usually when you put a tower, I think they give you money.
Yeah, you get, you get money.
They pay for it.
Yeah.
The network.
The carrier.
Yeah.
At least that's what I've seen, like in, when I used to work and audit, I used to audit condo associations and they would put towers on top of the condos, to your point. And then that would be revenue for them, like a hundred grand a year they would get, like AT&T would come and they put, but it would be a specific carrier. Like, so AT&T would be like, we want our tower here, cause that way we have so much more service, so we're gonna get more customers. Um so like, that would be one way we could go, we could say, oh, we're gonna have Verizon or AT&T, which I think are like the top two, one of them come in and put, and then they they keep giving money, but I don't, I don't know enough about, like, are there any health risks about putting a cell tower on top of a school, like
Yeah, that's something.